It is now 5:30, but I believe we're still waiting for a couple council members. Dennis Roberts and Eric Jacobson have not joined us yet.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I think we're all here. So we'll get started. Good evening, this is the reconvened meeting from Monday, June 22, 2020. We will pick up where we left off, which was with new business ordinance number 2020-06-035. Before we get started, I want to remind everybody, we have until 7:55 tonight, and then we'll need to leave.
6:55, Mayor.
6:55, sorry about that, 6:55. So about an hour and a half, and we'll begin to continue with the discussion. This ordinance was approving the fiscal year 2020, 2021 annual budget. It had been moved by Bill Brown, seconded by Eric, and we had started discussion on it. And I don't believe Bill actually offered them an amendment, is that correct?
No, I don't think there wasn't an amendment in a second, so I could do that if we'd like.
Okay, we did, you did ask Elizabeth to do some research on what the implications of what you were proposing. And so she did, so I'm going to have her present her memo.
Okay, so I provided to you with a short memo and updated exhibit for the ordinance, which I believe reflects the changes that were suggested last night in the police department budget and in the patrol budget and also for the K9 vehicle. The total of those changes would reduce the general fund budget by $192,277. Just a couple of things to note. The 4% reduction in police patrol salaries is roughly equivalent to two police officer positions. There were two items, as we discussed last night, in the benefits part of the budget that I did not include in the reductions, because we really just don't have flexibility on our placebo benefits and our payments to the police pension fund. I also included a couple of notes for you about overtime, which is included in the changes. So we do use savings from vacant positions sometimes to cover overtime, and we may actually see our overtime go up if we're, you know, having more vacancies. Also, we use savings from vacant positions to cover the cost of separation when officers leave our service. So that's, it's basically just an alternative for you, which will make it easier if you do want to make, if we do decide to make those changes tonight, rather than having to kind of juggle things on the fly. But you could adopt the budget as you originally received it. You could adopt it with these changes, you could change either one of these, so. Got a lot of options here.
No.
So yeah, I'll go ahead and move to replace the original exhibit with the revised exhibit, showing the reduction with the K9 reduction and the 4% reduction in patrol salaries.
I'll second that.
Listen, before we go any further, we need to make this meeting legal. That means we need to call a roll to make sure everybody is here.
I apologize, I forgot to do that, thank you.
That's quite all right, okay, are we ready?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson? Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Colebrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here. And Mr. Jacob, Dr. Jacobson did respond, he was just muted.
Okay.
He, we have a court, we have a full, full council. Okay, are we good to go, Billis? Okay. So we have a motion and a, by Bill, seconded by Jared, discussion. Dennis?
Um, I think I could support the 4% personnel reduction. I hesitate to follow through on the K9, partly because I think that Will Colebrook's comments, I thought were useful and somewhat convincing to me, so. I think we ought to talk about whether reducing the presence of a K9 unit is really necessary for the various reasons that Bill had put out that were useful to the community, the community as whole, and didn't focus necessarily on small amounts of marijuana as being the only reason why we have it.
Mary Alice?
I just wanted to seek clarification on that piece of the K9. So where, I believe what we are saying is that we are not getting rid of the K9 unit. What we are proposing is to not replace the existing vehicle, is that correct?
That's right, that's what's in the, that's what's in the detachment.
Correct, that, that's what's in the budget next year related to the K9, so.
So it's, it's really the vehicle itself won't be replaced immediately?
Correct.
Okay, well, that's different then, perhaps.
Bill, you had a comment, Bill Colebrook?
Yeah, um, so is there currently a K9 vehicle that is useful to Urbana Police? Because the issue is, you know, with a typical squad car, any shift, any officer can, can drive the squad car, but with a K9 vehicle, it's specialized, they can't. The only person that drives the K9 vehicle is the K9 officer. Number one, it's got a cage, you know, it's got specialized equipment that no other officer has. So if we do, if there is no viable K9 squad now, and we do not provide one for this next fiscal year, you are essentially getting rid of the K9, because there's nothing, you know, the dog cannot ride in the backseat. This guy's got to be in a specialized cage that's designed for canines. So I guess my question would be, does Urbana Police have a viable squad car now? And will it be viable next year? And once again, you know, having driven squad cars my entire adult life, you cannot have an old rickety squad car, it's got to be safe, you know, you're, you're, once again, if you're asking that officer to be responding to emergency calls, driving well above the limits of what a typical citizen does in order to respond quickly to, you know, an emergency for our citizens, the squad car has got to be, you know, a quality, reliable, safe squad car. So I guess my question is, what's, what's the status of the K9 squad car now?
Chief? So we, we do have a K9 squad car, it is functional, it is at the end of its, toward the end of its projected life. So our routine squad cars, we have over the course of my career, we have kept them longer and longer. Right now, it's four years on the rotation of the squad car. When I started, it was two years. With regards specifically to the K9 car, that car is driven exclusively by the K9 officer. We also stretch that car out, so it lasts, we project it to last 50% longer. So it is, it is at its 60-year lifespan, and that's why it did come up in, in, in the first. So if the question is, can we postpone the purchase of this? And, and I would, I would think at that point, the answer, I, I, I believe it would be yes. I suppose a mechanic might be a better person to answer that. It does have, I think, 60,000 miles on it, I've been told. And that includes a lot of idling and sitting north side there, or excuse me, in our police parking lot, and it has a lot of, so it does have idle miles to keep the, the temperature consistent in the back for the dog.
What was the mileage on the car, chief?
It's my understanding it is about 60,000.
60,000?
But it's more about, and that's why I added the idling, it's a lot of hours on it. And so there's a certain amount of, they, public works tracks the idling hours on, on those, because that's a different way to measure, as opposed to, I, I don't think you can necessarily take a civilian use of a vehicle and make that same exact, it's not a one-on-one sort of mileage, so. Anyway, if the question is, can we push it for another year? I believe, I, I don't see it necessarily as a reason as to why I have not been told, other than it was part of the schedule replacement.
Any other comments, Sharice?
Um. Okay, what, what I want, I'm just trying to understand, we're talking about a 4% cut? Bill, is that what you're talking about? Bill?
Yeah, to the, to the Patrol Division.
So you're talking about cutting two officers?
Yeah, I think one of them's already open, and then I pointed out last time that with the change in the school resource officer funding, we're completely getting reimbursed for two school resource officers now. Before that, we were covering one half of one, basically a halftime school resource officer. I understand that was a detective, not a patrol officer, but, you know, if there's needs to be a budget amendment to shift money between the two divisions or something, or I don't even know if you need an amendment for that, but it was a way to kind of make up for that partially.
Just a little bit of extra information. There is currently a vacancy, but a conditional offer of a job has been made to a woman, a young woman, who wanted to come, actually, she chose Urbana to work at Urbana over several competing officer, offer, offers. So she, we would have to withdraw that offer to a female police officer, candidate, if, if you cut that position. And also some perspective, I did get some information. While we are funding 47 patrol officer positions, there's never 47 officers on the street. We have a variety of reasons. One is currently eight are on leave of various sorts, one's a military leave, one's maternity leave, several are duty injury leaves, and then we have this, this vacancy. So currently, there are 35 patrol officers available to be on the street. And typically in Urbana, at any given time, there's between five and at the most eight, but it's a lot of times closer to five.
Okay.
Jared? Then Eric?
I, just curious, some of the information that was shared with us by Michelle Patel, that Dennis had originally cited as being the convincing statistics, and I think Bill Brown had mentioned them as well, being convincing statistics about the 99.9 or 99.5% alert when used during traffic stops, but only at 63% of the time did it actually find contraband. And I will, of course, give credit to the asterisk of that point, that, you know, many times there may be, have been alert for a minor amount that didn't result in an arrest. So we take the 63% with a grain of salt. And Bill Colebrook had brought up, you know, some of the larger issues that we expect to be useful for canines, such as large drug busts and things of that nature. Chief Seraphin, do you have information on whether or not our K9 has actually been involved in anything other than common traffic stop and drug alert use in the last year? I just wasn't able to find any more detail about what kind of things the K9 was actually being used for, other than alerting in traffic stops and other things. And Bill Colebrook had mentioned, you know, discovering firearms that may have been discarded and so on and so forth. So I'm interested in those other things that were not involved with marijuana.
Okay, so with regards to the, the K9, I believe that there was a memo that went out that had to do with some of this, the skill sets. One of the things, and just to preface this, we were talking about the car tonight, not necessarily the whole entire K9 program. So we are actually trying to grab a couple of extra bits of detail. I know this weekend, there was a stolen car that was in our weekend summary, and a dog was used to facilitate the recovery of, the car was parked, suspect ran off, he was found in the parking lot nearby. I know that we've used them to look for article searches as well. Jared, unfortunately tonight, I can't tell you exactly, like, here's, here are the five humans that were recovered this year and the four guns that were recovered. I don't have that information at my fingertips, and I'm hoping here, as the course of the meeting, we can perhaps shed a little more light on that. And so, I guess that says, I guess what I'm saying is, with regards to whether the car was viable for another year, it's my estimation that that is yes. Whether the program wants to continue, I don't have that information at my fingertips for you.
Okay, um, one other consideration I had was, do you know or are you aware of how many other of our local law enforcement county or state police agencies who operate in our jurisdiction or near our jurisdiction also have canines?
Yes, they do, and so I know that, I believe that the county has two, if not three, I know U of I has two, if not three, and I think the same holds true for Champaign as well. And I think one of the discussion points, and I think I've had this sort of, maybe some of you individually, with regards to the K9, is that the idea has always been that not everybody has to have one on for every hour of every day, and then hopefully between land tool, which has, I think, at least one, somebody might have one that we can get on scene fairly quickly. And so it, it, to be part of the team, Urbana would have at least one dog that, that we would have. One of the thing that, I don't know if there's any other, does that answer your question, Jared?
Yeah, I, one quick follow-up on that, that I had. If knowing that there were other dogs that may be available to the, to the department, if we were not to keep ours, but you just, the way you said that made it sound like we have to have a dog to play ball, or nobody else is going to let us use their dog, is that what you're saying?
No, I, I don't think it's quite that severe, I think, I, I, I think that the other, the other agencies would say, yes, do you need one tonight? And what, what, I, I know at one point, there was some discussion about people, and there might be citizens and bloodhounds and whatnot. Part of the deal when we do these things, and I am not a K9 expert, I don't pretend to be a K9 expert, but part of the deal is the speed with which we can get them there. They're looking for fresh vegetation and very sensitive things, and those things dissipate quickly. So the idea usually is, who's got a dog on now that we can get here relatively quickly from within our major law enforcement agencies? I, I don't believe that they would cut us out, but as being a good neighbor, I know when we last made this decision a few years ago, that was at least a factor for us to consider.
Thank you.
Sharice?
I just was going to say, I know when I did the citizens' police training, my understanding is that, for example, let's say, a car stopped with probable cause regarding suspicion of drug trafficking. And if, and in the, and in order to hold over or detain a person for a period of time, for, to have the dog sniff the car or something, it's imperative, there's just a short amount of time in which to get the, because a dog is kind of considered an officer. So there's just a short amount of time for, I think, constitutionally or something that you can do that. If you stop a car and you, let's say you stop it for a traffic light stop, they, they ran a red light, and you stop them, and there's, you see white powder on the, the front seat. You are stopping a car to give them a ticket for running the red light, and you only have the time that it would take you to stop that car, talk to the person, get and give them the ticket for the red light for the K9 unit to get there and sniff the car. You can't hold a person and make them, that's my understanding, am I wrong? You guys are policemen, Bill, Bryant?
So, so Sharice, yes, you are correct, the limiting, so, and without going too deep here, sniffing air around a vehicle that the United States Supreme Court has said is not a search. And so the limiting factor is the length of the detention. And so when a traffic stop is made, if a dog is nearby, they can, they could run the dog. Now, separate and distinct from what the Supreme Court has said, Urbana Police have a more restrictive policy to say, you just can't run a dog, because the dog is right there with you, we need some sort of reason for that. And, and so they have to have some sort of articulable reason to run the dog besides just the speeding ticket or stop sign violation or something like that. So it has to do with the time of the detention, which does speak to the, the access of, the ease of access of the animal.
Okay.
Mary Alice, and then Bill?
Shifting the conversation a little bit from the K9 unit, I wanted to talk a little bit about the 4% decrease in the patrol. So I appreciate Elizabeth's reminder that it could have unintended consequences in terms of the amount of overtime. In addition, that those funds are used for separation pay, so that's vacation and sick leave payout for people who aren't familiar with that. The other thing that I'm thinking about is that if, if we're asking police to answer the same calls for service, we have to have a certain number of patrolmen on the streets in order to do that. But what, right now, what we're talking about are two things. The first thing is, is that we've had a reduction in the calls for service for the past couple of months due to COVID. We don't know if that's going to be maintained, but for the moment, we do have a reduction. The second piece is, is that the conversation about one door and reducing the number of calls for service by the police department. So I feel like 4% holding back from this position, from this year, is, is something that we should strongly consider. I mean, it's good for us to know what the consequences are of that. And, you know, I want to increase the diversity of our police department, but at the same time, we have some hard choices to make during this time. So my, those are my thoughts right now on this.
I will say, we have an opportunity to increase the diversity by hiring another female officer, but this will not allow us to do it at this time, so there's that factor. I believe we have nine or 10 women on the force now, which is actually very good. I, I want to interject one thing here, which just occurred to me. We also are still in the middle of a pandemic, and I was on the call with US Conference of Mayors Group not too long ago, with a mayor from a city in Michigan. And at the time of the call, he had 50% of his patrol officers out due to COVID. So there's that, while our calls for service are down, there's a big unpredictability factor circulating in the community right now, and, and officers are probably more vulnerable than anybody else. So we have to keep that in mind as well. Bill, you wanted to comment?
Um, yeah, so on the K9, I think the, the idea behind not funding the vehicle would give us a year to kind of take a closer look at a lot of these issues that have been raised and, and give the department time, because they haven't really had a lot of time to evaluate the statistics. Although it sounds like, you know, their minds are made up, but as far as, you know, seeing white powder on a seat, I think that would be probable cause, I don't think you'd need a dog to tell you that that was white powder that might smell like marijuana or whatever. But I think.
Powder, you don't know, could be flour, could be sugar.
I don't know the rules on, you know, the law on that, but I think the idea with, the problem with the K9 being trained to sniff marijuana is that it's, it's legal now, and so they would be alerting to a lot of different things. So it'd be, I think, I mean, there was a Supreme Court case, Colorado Supreme Court case, said that that was a problem, I don't know, I know from talking, talking to Bill a little bit, that our local state's attorney doesn't think it will be, but, you know, there's some unknowns there, I think, worth looking at. If this was the county or the state, I think the need for a K9 would probably be greater with potential for lost persons, we don't have a lot of area in Urbana where people can get lost. And really, the lost person cases I can think of that happened in the county, the baby that was found a few hundred yards from the car was found by a sheriff's deputy five or six hours later, I don't know if they tried a dog. So I don't know, I think that needs to be reevaluated. I think there's a lot of questions there, and the year would give us some time to look at that. For the 4%, as far as withdrawing the offer, I think there's enough flexibility with 4% cut, where if you know there's going to be a couple retirements coming up later in the year, you could go ahead and make the offer to someone to do increased diversity. Or, you know, if there's a retirement in a different division or something, you could probably switch that.
She's going to be sitting around waiting.
So, yeah, I think that was about all I had for that. Thanks.
Eric?
I think I'm good with stretching out the vehicle for another year. And I think I would be good for a 2% reduction in the salary and benefits line, which would permit the offer that is conditionally outstanding to be made. This kind of seems like nibbling around the edges, and having been around for a while, I do remember the last time, that, I think it was the last time, a previous time, and I think the last time that we changed the police budget.
Sorry, I didn't quite catch that.
Whoops, that we changed the, that we changed the police budget in response to changing circumstances. And this was under a previous mayor, seems like a century ago. And there was an epidemic of shootings in Southeast Urbana. And this will really seem quaint to people here. We had a lot of citizens asking for more police. And we did increase our number of police lines by, by two. There's, this is a funny issue to deal with, because you change, you, you may have circumstances that are immediate, but the changes you make to the police department are recurring, and they just carry on year after year. If it's a reduction, it takes quite a while to come back up to current staff. I was aware, I did refresh myself on the statistics of how we are staffed with respect to other communities. And Chief Seraphin, you know, what I saw, and then heard from Chief Seraphin, but what I had previously seen, is that we are, compared to other communities, we are relatively lightly policed, both with respect to our budget per capita and with respect to the number of officers we have per capita. So we're not overpoliced. And in my opinion, largely, we are well policed, and I think there's reasonable documentation of that. So I would, I would support stretching the vehicle budget out for another year, eliminating that from the current year budget. And I would like to support if we, if. And I would like to support if we, if to get on the table. A two percent reduction which would permit hiring of the new officer. Would predict, would, would permit hiring of the new officer, but would would not permit a replacement of an upcoming retirement during the coming year. And presumably that can be revisited in a number of months when the plans for the, the new door into appropriate referral for emergencies such as domestic abuse, drug abuse and mental health issues. With, when, when those plans are more mature.
Sharice?
I think I have a question from Bryant. How many of, of, we're just talking, are we, we're talking about the number of patrol officers, right? Is, does that include detectives and so on and so forth? Or, I mean, as far as police per capita. Does that include, you know, the lieutenants, detectives, everybody's, or is that just the patrol officers?
So if we're talking about most, the officer per capita ratio. That is, it's always, the facts that I have seen have always been law enforcement officer. Now, sometimes you might see total employees, which would include civilian staff as well. But most of the stats, the FBI UCR staff talks about law enforcement sworn officers. Specifically, as a matter of fact, the definition, individuals who ordinarily carry a firearm and a badge have full arrest powers and are paid from governmental funds. So, like I said, and I'm, you know, as we've had some of these discussions, I think nationwide, the average is somewhere between two to three. That's not what I'm talking about. When we're discussing these things, it's about sort of where, I know that we're one point three high. And I, I understand that. So I just wanted that to be part of the discussion as we, as we move forward. I do want to mention one other thing real fast. We are currently at fifty-nine officers and I say this in response to Eric's two percent. So the, that's where we currently are with the extended, with the, the offer to the female being, that would be to sixty, which would be the full complement. So as we talk about reducing two percent, that would be, that, that would be the position we're talking, if we're talking about four percent. There's the rescinding that offer, plus then extrapolating out and anticipating a retirement or departure.
How many, how many officers are in, have their years in that they would retire? How, how many do you estimate? Just give me an estimate.
I don't, so right now there are, there are, you're talking about your officers that have at least twenty years on, who are fifty years old, and I think we're in the neighborhood of three or four of those. If not right at this moment, that would be coming up this fiscal year. So, and again, the best I can usually do is say that at some point last year, we ran and we had hired forty-six officers over the last ten years. So again, we're about four point six officers that were there coming and going over the course of, of the year.
One more question.
And it's Dennis's turn.
How many officers, I, I just want to get a rough idea of when, for example, we have like, you know, shootings at, like the OK Corral around the corner from our house, how many officers respond generally?
So it would, well, at least two, if not up to four or five, it sort of depends on how many are available. The nature of the call, there's so many different variables. How many suspects, are there suspects, are there cars leaving, are there not cars leaving? So it's kind of, it's hard to say. At, at a minimum, we would send two. If we only had one officer available. And it was, in, in your neighborhood, we would probably have a couple of cars from Champagne that would come to assist with that initial. With regards to the shooting that you've talked about. And as a matter of fact, with regards to shootings this year, last year was a record year. And when we gave, when I presented to the coalition, relatively recently, we had, we're up fifty percent this year. From last year's record pace, we are fifty percent ahead of, ahead of that. So I understand the discussion about the pandemic and its influence on crime, but there are still, there are still things happening.
Thank you, Dennis. Could you unmute, please?
Okay, so because the the aspect of the K nine unit is totally about the car and not the officer or the dog, as I understand it, is that correct? We're talking about really this, the car maintenance for one more year. Well, I'm driving a car that's got two hundred and forty thousand miles on it and it's still in all right shape. I think that probably we can get by with one more year. And, you know, we have, we have staff on hand that ma- maintain our cars. So I'm not afraid of that. I think that Eric offered a compromise as far as the police hiring goes. You know, if we did a two percent reduction with the assumption that there was going to be the retirement coming up this year, we might get through that and still be able to have a new officer come on. I guess it would be a status quo. Because we wouldn't be adding, adding a new officer, we would be, be just replacing an officer straight across. So I'm pretty much willing to make that compromise, partly because I think it's important that we show the community that we're making an effort, we intend to make an effort to channel more funds to services which the community is really looking for. While still trying to retain the security of the community in ways that seem logical to us. So, you know, I'm willing to go with a two percent cut and the personnel to see where that goes.
Jared?
Elizabeth, we had spoken a little bit in the previous consideration about the funds and I didn't, I'm looking back through the memo, but I don't see, you know, the thing that I see most straightforward is reductions in general fund with total one hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars. With the bill suggested four percent decrease and the non-renewal of the K nine patrol units. But what I'm not seeing is what would we do with that savings is that if we were to make these adjustments, then the entire budget just changes? Are we planning on saying, okay, well, money we would have spent on this is going to be held somewhere else? Because if we are, and the intention of the council is to say that these reductions are going to be something that would be used for, you know, what Diana mentioned the other night with the one door thing or some other purpose. That we should be holding these funds in some sort of special funds to be used for tho- for those purposes. Rather than just funneling them back into the general budget. In my mind, I don't know how that process is. Is that included in here? Do we need to add something to that to do that? What's going on with that?
I'll take a stab at that, thank you. And I'm glad you asked that question. We, I think we are all in consensus that we do, and we do intend to look at, you know, restructuring our whole emergency response. And that means it has to be done in a thoughtful, planful way. So we're going to have to look at the roles the police have today. Who can take the, you know, which roles can be shifted to, to an alternative service provider. Have a system in place, how you're going to pay for that, and then how you're going to implement. So that's going to take, you know, a great deal of work to get to that point. But in, but it's important and necessary if we're going to end up with a sustainable model. This one door, for example, that's been in the planning for almost four years. Now, you know, there's, it's maybe not consistently during that four years, but it's, you know, it's, it takes a long time sometimes to get these, these systems in place. That's the one we're closest to implementing and I really, I'm excited about it. So yeah, there's an option for the money. The other thing, we do not have staff who could lead this whole process toward figuring out this new model. And figuring out how we're going to make the transition. So we're going to need funding to pay somebody to lead this effort. Either bring them on staff, hire a consultant or facilitator. You know, we can figure that out, but we, we certainly can't do that whole thing in-house. And, and I, I would advocate if you're going to take money from this budget, it should be earmarked for that purpose. If not for the one door. So yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't just, you know, give a little bit here, a little bit there and, and it'll disappear. It really should, I think, be earmarked for helping us develop this new model of, of emergency response.
Elizabeth, how would we do that? Can we do that with the way the revision is written? Do we need to offer something else to do that? Or is that just, is that accomplishable by direction to staff?
So, so right now we have the reduction part in the budget, right? And if, if that's not allocated to some other expense, it's going to go back into fund balance until some, at some point in the future. When you make a decision about how to spend it and then we will amend the budget. So if you want to allocate it to something specific now, when we approve the budget, we should do that now.
Do we need to do an amendment to do that? Or can we just offer direction and that's enough?
So, I mean, I think if you offer some fairly specific direction, then we can clean up the exhibit to accomplish that. And file it with the ordinance after it's approved.
Okay, and then just quick comment, then let other, others go. Not to belabor the point, but I would definitely not support two percent. I would definitely support four percent. And I would definitely support removing the K nine unit. And I'll wait for other responses.
So I'd like to move an amendment to the amendment. And which would do two things, one, replace the four percent with two percent. And number two would direct the savings towards planning for the one door policy and implementation.
Dennis?
Yeah, so that's a direction I, I would support. So I would second the amendment proposed by Eric. And of course, that does include Eric, the reduction of the replacement of the K nine unit car. Yes, it does, it does include, you know, stretching out the current K nine vehicle for another year. Yeah, I think it's a compromise and I think it's in the right direction and I think it's sustainable at the mo- at this moment.
Is that a friendly amendment or is that an amendment to the?
It depends on whether the mover of the first amendment thinks it's friendly, I guess.
Oh, that's an amendment to the amendment. We'll vote on that first.
Okay, so we'll just vote on that. Are you prepared to vote on that?
Should we discuss it?
You can discuss it, yes. I'm going to go with Bill Colbrook and then I'll get back.
So I'm frantically waving my hand, thank you, Mayor. So to the squad car, roughly fifty thousand dollars. I guess I just want to reiterate my comments, it's not a civilian car. It, you know, squad cars, the very nature of how they're driven, they accelerate hard. They break hard. These, these cars are driven to their limits because the officers are responding to emergency calls, life threatening calls. The chief had mentioned the idle time. You talk to any mechanic, you know, an engine that's at idle and squad cars idle a lot in their, in their lifetime, it, it hurts the engine. So, you know, comparing them against a civilian car, I think it's kind of apples and oranges. However, having said that, I would, in, in the, in the spirit of trying to find money for, you know, other projects like one door or other social service programs. I would be in favor of deferring that purchase of the squad car for another year. Sorry to the K nine officer, you know, perhaps having to drive a, a car one more year than what they had planned on. But I think that would be maybe a fiscally responsible thing to do. When it comes to personnel reductions, I'm a hundred percent against it. And because I'm looking at the numbers, the chief had mentioned it, we've mentioned it a couple of other times. And I'm looking at my list and my list may be a year old, but I think the positions are the same. You know, my list shows the officer per capita is one point three nine. That percentage may be a little bit different, but it doesn't matter if it's one point three nine or, or if it's percentage points away. I believe our position as a city compared to these other cities is exactly the same. There is only one city on this list and that's Macomb that has less officers per capita. And I think we could probably argue successfully that the, that the issues that Urbana faces is a lot more severe than what Macomb faces. Bloomington, Champagne, Danville, Decatur, DeKalb, East Moline, East Peoria, Edwardsville, Evanston, Kankakee. Moline, Normal, Peoria, Quincy, Rantoul, Springfield, they're all above us. Every single city has more officers per capita than we do. By that very nature, I don't think that we are overpoliced and I don't think that we're overfunded. The number one cost of any, of any agency, it's personnel. You run a business, personnel is the most costly thing. And what you're, what you're proposing is cutting personnel. The, and, and, and the officers per capita proves that we don't have over personnel per, per our for the, and then the number of citizens that we have in the city. The, the gun violence, you know, that, that we're faced in Champagne, Urbana. I, I think this is just a really, really, really bad time to be reducing the number of patrol officers. They got, that are going to be responding to the, the shots fired calls in, in Champagne, Urbana. And, and I guess I've got a, a question for the chief again, and then, Chief, I'm having a hard time hearing you tonight. Did you say that, that one of the statistics that you gave to the coalition? Are we fifty percent ahead in, in confirmed shootings this year as we were to last year? I couldn't quite hear you.
Give me one second, Bill, I want to pull this up so I can get it correct, you know, make sure I use my camp counselor voice here. So as of, and these, these numbers are as of June eleventh. As of June eleventh last year, Urbana had fifteen shooting incidents. As June eleventh this year, Urbana had twenty-three shooting incidents. So, and then overall in the county, with, and that's all of the Champagne, Urbana, U of I and Champaign County Sheriff, we're at ninety-three total incidents, which is forty-one ahead of where we were last year. So those are the, the quick stats on the shooting summary.
Thank you. And, and I believe from, you know, not from the police community, but from this, the, the citizens, you know, the business owners. I think one of the, the greatest issues that people consider quality of life in, in Champagne, Urbana is the gun violence. You know, it doesn't have to happen on your block. It can happen five blocks away, it can happen across town. It can happen in the county. If there's, if there's a shooting incident, it impacts you on a humanistic level. And I think, given those statistics, it is a really, really bad time to reduce the number of officers in the Urbana Police Department, given the fact that there's only one town and it's Macomb. That has less officers per capita than we do. And, you know, I also want to make the comment about the, the one door, that's an excellent program, sounds like. I'm eager to, to talk to Lieutenant Sanders about what, what one door is all about. But also it's still a concept, they're still working on it. So even if we, like Jared had said, if we, if we takes our savings that we have, whatever, however we get there and we put that off to the side, and then we put it towards social programs, we, 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 we put it towards mental health issues. We put it towards perhaps one door, it's still a concept. They're still in just the initial meetings trying to craft this. And, and, you know, I, I have no idea how long it will take to, to get that program stood up. But I like the concept of, of taking money that, that we find in savings and put it towards our critical programs for the citizens. But I just don't know, I just want the council to realize that, that one door, even though we're talking about. But I just don't know. I just want the council to realize that, that one-door, even though we're talking about it, even though it's exciting, we, none of us have any idea when, when that program is gonna be a viable program. Thank you.
Mary Alice?
So a couple of things. Bill, I want to thank you for your insight as, as the chief of police of Parkland. And I actually had the opportunity to be in the K-9 car when I went on the ride-along and it is definitely a different vehicle. And I probably was in the vehicle that we are now talking about. So, so the one thing that I'm thinking about, the chief has continuously provided a statistic, which is on generally have 4.6 personnel turnover within the unit. And I feel like if we, we have a 4% reduction, which is basically the equivalent to two people, we can still give the offer to the woman who has now applied for it.
Uh-oh, Mary Alice.
You're frozen, dude, Mary Alice.
I'm gonna have to. What happened?
We can come back to her once she gets her. Yeah.
She'll, she'll call in. Bill Brown?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the per capita. I think we have to be careful comparing our city to other cities, mostly because of the campus population, obviously. And the 70-some officers on their U of I police force that don't seem to get counted with any population. Our, you know, our population's 42,000, Champaign's is 80-some thousand. And we each get our per capita share, but those 70-some officers or however many there are on campus don't seem to contribute to either per capita. In the summertime, our population's probably closer to 30,000. So how do you calculate that? You know, I think there's a lot of problems, just throwing out a per capita number and saying that we should be at a certain level. You know, I understand, you know.
Down where you can find a seat.
I understand that there are minimum levels and you definitely want to have people to respond to these issues. But I think we're asking for a pretty small cut in response to what appears to be overall less demand. Yeah, there's a few, nothing's a few when you're talking about shootings, but yeah, there's more shootings. But there's also hundreds of less traffic stops and things like that. So, so I'm still gonna support the original.
Okay, Sharice and then Jared, and we, I need to get close to taking a vote, at least on the amendment to the amendment. Sharice? Can you unmute, please?
I just, I just wanted. I know in the, the short time, you know, the time that I've, I've been home in my neighborhood, not just in my ward, there have been shootings with like gangland shootings. We're talking like, you know, Al Capone type of stuff that's, that's happened. And, and so I do worry about, about there being less patrol officers. Over here in my ward at least, there are days when I see, I might see a patrol officer, you know, driving around through the ward. And then there are days when I, to be honest, I don't. And I worry about the young people that play in the park, people walking down the street. And moreover, folks moving out of, out of my neighborhood because they can't stand the shooting anymore. And that's happened recently, where people have moved out. Because Ellis subdivision has, seems to them to have turned into some type of, of a, you know, episode of, of untouchables. So I just want to put that out on the table and I'm not sure how I'm gonna vote right now. Amendment on amendment or whatever. But I do worry about there not being enough personnel to actually take care of a problem when there is a problem. And that's basically it.
Jared, did you have a comment?
I did. I just wanted to reiterate to council, you know, that the root causes of gun violence are not the presence or lack of presence of police. They come from issues that stem far beyond whether or not police are there or they're not there. You know, these are big issues. And one of the biggest issues that we're facing right now in our community is that there is a large swath of our community who have lost trust in our police. Police are reactionary. Police do not prevent gun violence. The police come and show up after gun violence has happened and pray that somebody gives them a tip and tells them what happened. And when there is no trust between the people who are living with the people who commit that gun violence and the police, they're not liable to tell them who it was if they knew who it was. Because there is no, there is no trust in that. And what we're trying to do, I think, with this 4% is a gesture to our community that we are committed to putting our funds towards things that can actually prevent gun violence. And issues that will prevent gun violence, not just manage it, try to over-police it. Because it will never go away unless we attack the root causes of it. And people are calling on us to move our money to dealing with those root causes rather than putting more money into reacting to those causes. So I just want to make that point that that is, that's really the philosophical argument we're having here. And what folks really should be considering when we're taking a vote on this and when we're considering putting that money into other programs, that's, that's the idea. That's, that's the thing we're going after here. That said my piece, I'll support the VERF and I'll support 4%. I will not support 2%.
Mary Alice, did you want to finish your thought?
Sorry about that. My internet cut out. So I think my basic thought was that we want to be thoughtful about the replacements that we have in the police department. And by saying that two positions at the moment will not be filled, I don't think that that means that we need to let somebody go. That's not gonna happen. And I also don't think that it prevents us from giving the offer to the young lady that Bill had talked about and you had talked about, Diane. So those are my thoughts.
Okay. Are you prepared to vote on the amendment to the amendment at this point? Thumbs up. Okay, this was moved by Eric, seconded by Dennis. It's a 2% reduction plus the K-9 vehicle. Will the clerk please call the roll?
You'll need to, there you go. You got it.
Okay.
Ms. Wu?
No.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, I can count.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
No.
Mr. Miller?
No.
There were four yeses, three nos.
No, yes.
Okay, that amendment to the amendment passes.
So do we vote on the original amendment now?
As, as modified.
So the amendment is now modified to be 2% reduction with the K-9 vehicle carried over for a whole year.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, can I, can I just say something now?
Yes.
All right. So, okay, you know, I appreciate everybody who would like to go to 4%. I think, I think we could go 2% now and show good faith to the community and we might be able to improve this situation in the future. So, you know, we're compromising, but I think it can be a positive step and considered to be thoughtful. You'd like to do more, but you know, our resources, we don't know what they're gonna be. And, you know, there might be overall new reductions required in our budget depending upon future income. So the best we can do is, I think, compromise today.
Well, and I will remind everyone, we will be revisiting the budget in September, October and evaluating, we'll have a better idea what the impact of COVID is on our budget. So there absolutely will be another opportunity to look at the entire budget. In fact, we're gonna have to. So, so that, that's coming up. We'll also have a better idea, perhaps, the resources this one door will require. Sharice, then Jared.
Yeah, and I just want to say, and I, I think it's a good compromise in the sense that it's a lot easier to say that we can cut more money later than to have to find more money later to, for, to fulfill, to do something else. So I, and since I'm, and when I think about it, since we will be revisiting the budget, it may be an opportunity, and we'll be doing that. We've done it all year, even with the budget that we had. We've moved money from one source to another. At least, you know, that's my memory. And I think that it is something that can be, that doesn't have to be, it's not monolithic. It's something that's really relatively fluid right now because of the fact that we are in such uncertain times. Because, you know, if, if things were set in stone, well, if things were like they were last June and we weren't worried about other issues and revenues or whatever, then I would probably have supported a 4%, a 4% cut. But with everything being so unpredictable right now, I'm willing to look at what we have now and then go back and reevaluate if necessary. Definitely.
Okay. Bill Colbrook?
I, I think we're making a huge mistake of co-mingling equipment, the squad car and personnel. You've got, you would've got a yes vote out of me for eliminating, you know, $50,000 out of the budget. Savings that can go towards social programs, but since you're insisting on co-mingling it with even a 2% reduction in people, I think that's a huge mistake and I'm not gonna support anything that says any reduction in, in personnel.
Okay. Okay, Jared?
But I just, on the idea of compromise, just want to reiterate to folks that, you know, our community is calling for something very, very different for us to do with our money. And the fact that anyone would see going from 4% to 2% as a compromise is really just saying that what people are telling us, no, that doesn't matter. You know, we're gonna throw this little crumb at you and, and let's go from there. Now, I'm saying that knowing that we need to be thoughtful to be able to do something with our funds if we were to reallocate them. So we're not obviously prepared to do that today. But just want to have that perspective. People were asking for us to eliminate 50% of our police budget. And to say that 4 to 2 is a compromise, 4 is basically telling anybody who had that point of view, what? No way was, was that right? So just want to say that I will support this because at least we're doing something. Those are my comments.
It's a starting point.
It's, it's, it's the beginning. It's the beginning. Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Hands are hand raised then.
Oh, sorry.
No, I, I don't know if Bill Colbrook knows this, but he can offer an amendment if he wants to split those two things. And if you, if you'd like, Bill, I can, I can do that and you can second it or you can offer the amendment. So if you want to be able to split the, the K-9 VERF from the personnel cut, I would be in support of that if you want to do that.
Well, I would love to do that. I mean, if, if I can get, Elizabeth, did you have a comment before I did that? But I would love to be able to split and offer an amendment to split the equipment away from the personnel and vote independently on, on the squad car and then independently on any reduction in personnel.
So I, I will ask Jim to confirm this, but I believe you only get one vote on the budget. So we can't on the budget really divide the question. You get one vote, vote on the budget and then you can amend it as many times as you want. Is that correct, Jim?
I, I think what you can do, because you haven't voted on a budget yet, so there's nothing to amend. And there is a question right now pending to, I assume the motion is right now to approve the budget, right? Or is it approve this amendment?
It's a perfect amendment.
The what?
Amendment, which is a two-part amendment.
Okay, I think you can split, you know, you can either council member Wu or council member Colbrook with the other one if they wish to second. They can move because we're still talking about an, a, an amendment to a pending motion. Somebody can move to bifurcate, to separate the vote on equipment versus personnel. I think you can do that.
So my motion is on the floor to, to bifurcate, to split off, you know, the, the equipment, the, the K-9 squad car away from any personnel.
And I'll second.
So how does that, how does that vote get taken? Do, do they vote to delete only the squad car? And then a second vote to delete the squad car and the 2%?
No, the way that, as I understood, the motion was cast is to separate personnel from the VERF equipment. Therefore, there would be a vote on eliminating the equipment, the squad car or extending its life, exactly how the motion is cast. And then a second vote on reduction of personnel.
Yes, that's my, that's my intention.
So then.
You're splitting the vote. There'll be two votes.
All right. So first vote is on the amendment proposed by Bill, by Bill, seconded by Mary Alice for eliminating the squad car. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Okay. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. So that will be attached to the original budget ordinance. Okay, the next vote is for the 2% reduction. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
No.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. So those two items are now attached to the original budget ordinance. Eric?
We, we need a separate vote on the squad car.
We did that one.
We just.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, my bad.
So those both passed and each, and during a separate vote. So we're back to ordinance 2020-06-035, which is the ordinance approving fiscal year 2021 annual budget, including a 2% reduction in the budget plus the elimination or the extension of the squad car. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes. Is everyone, did everyone vote? Okay, all right, that motion passes. Next item is ordinance number 2020-06-036, ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance. Elizabeth, did you have further comments on this?
I'll just give you a few quick comments. So traditionally, at the time we adopt the budget, we also amend the current. we also amend the current year budget to reconcile our estimates back to the budget. Um, because this is a budget amendment, it requires six affirmative votes. Um, we have listed for you the changes that have occurred to the current year budget since um, from what you saw in the proposed budget book. Um, there are some salary amounts that are reduced in public works because they won't be um, spent. That was, um, we, that was following up on a request from council member Brown. A number of items are, are for expenses um, related to the pandemic that we hope to um, be able to um, have paid through grant funds and some reconciliation um, to the capital improvement plan. That's it.
We get a motion? Mary Alice?
Real quickly, if that's okay. I know, I'm being cognizant of the time. So we have, I believe we have a, we have this memorandum from you, Elizabeth, and there are two separate things here. Um, and I just wanted to confirm, is the community development staffing changes from the result of the office clerk position to be temporarily converted to an office specialist position? Is that for the upcoming fiscal year or for the previous fiscal year?
That's for next fiscal year. That's in the budget ordinance you just passed.
Okay, I was confused about that. So, so this amendment that we're talking about is COVID and salary estimates?
Um, basically, yes.
Okay, all right. Um, I can move that we approve ordinance number 2020 zero six zero three six and ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for budget amendment number eight fiscal year 2019 to 2020 estimates for approval.
Yeah, I'll second that then.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Dennis. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes. That motion passes. All right, next item on the agenda are reappointments to boards and commissions. Um, and there's a list of them and I'll read them. And a thank you to all the volunteers who are serving the city in this way. For the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, Annie Adams, Civil Service Commission, Tom Betts, Civilian Police Review Board, Ricardo Diaz and Megan McGinty, Community Development Commission, Robert K. Freeman, Design Review Board, Dustin Allred, Fireman's Pension Board, Elizabeth Hannan, Historic Preservation Commission, Trent Shepherd, Human Relations Commission, Frances Rigberg, Market at the Square Advisory Board, Valerie, Valerie Perez, Kent Miles, Mary Alice Wu, Sustainability Advisory Committee, Madeline Garbage, Andrew Stumpf, Morgan White, Urbana Free Library Board, Chris Share. Um, appointments to boards and commissions, these are Civilian Police Review Board Vice Chairs, Ricardo Diaz, and a new member of the Human Relations Commission, Florence Caplow. She's uh, Minister at the Unitarian Church. So is there a motion to approve these appointments?
I'll make the motion to approve the appointments as read.
Okay.
Realizing that Trent Shepherd now has become a historic preservation item in himself.
And I'll second it.
Moved by uh, Dennis, seconded by Bill. Any discussion? Jared?
Just one quick item uh, that I'm unfamiliar with. What is the uh, process if appointments, do appointments just exist in perpetuity?
No, they, they all have specific terms. It depends on the board.
Okay. Um, I just know that there were issues raised with one of, uh, one of the folks who was on this list and I, I didn't want to support the appointment of that person, but I won't separate, separate the question. I'm curious though as to if somebody was, can you rescind an appointment? That we've approved? Diane, that's my, that's my.
There are criteria for um, and again, each board and commission has different rules, but there's usually criteria for attendance and that sort of thing.
Okay, um, I just would like to iterate that anybody who's being appointed, we need to be uh, cognizant of folks showing up and doing the work that they've been uh, set it for because there is problems with folks not, not doing so on some boards and commissions. So just want to put that out there.
And I will note, we have just received um, uh, notice that Darius White is stepping down from the CPRB. So there is a vacancy on CPRB. And that's a real loss to the board. So we have a motion on the floor made by Dennis, seconded by Bill Colbrook. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Can I vote on this since my name is on this list?
Hmm, good question. Should we separate that out? We'll separate that one out. So what you're voting on is everything but Market at the Square at this point.
Okay, are you ready?
Yes.
Miss, oh, Miss Wu, we can, we'll come back to you. No, we can take you now. Yeah.
You can vote now.
Yes.
Yes. My vote is yes.
Okay, Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. And then we have the Market at the Square Advisory Board.
So we start with Mr. Jacobson on this one.
Uh, I vote yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Give her a chance, yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. Last, I don't, wow, 6:47.
I, I'm going to have to excuse myself because I have to be the physical person, physical meeting person at the BPAC meetings. I need to go over there and be there at seven.
Okay.
See y'all later.
Um, would you like to place this item on the agenda of a future meeting?
Sure.
Jared?
Uh, since I was one of the folks who added this to the agenda, um, I do regret that we're running out of time to really get into this issue. I would definitely support moving it to the agenda of the next committee of the whole meeting. Uh, but I would just like to briefly have the uh, opportunity to explain to the public what uh, what the intention was of adding this to the agenda, if that, if I may. Uh, so even though we're not going to discuss this tonight, uh, it, and, in, in detail as it needs to be appropriated, there are a lot of concerns that have come up with uh, policies surrounding body camera use. There's also a large gap of knowledge between the general public uh, and what those policies are. And really the intention of bringing this uh, up is that even council members uh, don't know all the answers to some of the questions people have been asking us, especially when it comes to the retention of body camera footage, uh, what that means in light of, you know, uh, complaints. If body camera footage is associated with a complaint, if it's associated with a FOIA request, if it's associated with all different kinds of things, uh, I don't think during any of our discussions other than the basic outlines, we really got into the details of what that looks like for retention. I know all of us kind of have an overview of use, but it would be good for the public to know. So the general uh, sense of why we wanted to add this to the agenda was to cover those, some of those things. This is also part of a larger uh, efforts that Mary Alice and I have are, are trying to do to make sure that we are talking about the police department on every agenda going forward. And that was uh, why this was added to this particular one. It's an issue that we did not plan on covering in detail at the Thursday special meeting. So we felt it was appropriate to try and bring it up and I uh, look forward to discussing it at the next committee of the whole meeting. I don't know if we need to make a motion to do that and Mary Alice can fill in anything that I might have forgotten.
No, I, I agree with that. Um, I think that we should maybe think about whether or not on the next meeting, if it's a presentation or a discussion, um, given that we want to have a presentation hopefully by somebody in the police department who has, you know, the answers to all these questions. So I think it might be more appropriate to have it as a presentation because we can still have a discussion and ask questions because that's our intent is to ask questions.
Uh, Sharice?
Yeah, we might, uh, you might want to have someone um, that um, from the court system or, or then maybe law issues, somebody that can talk to the constitutionality uh, regarding when it's appropriate, when they can be used, if they're, you know, what, what are the guidelines, deadlines, so on and so forth. That's what uh, my interest is. If, if we're going to have the conversation, my interest is not that um, you know, I know, I know camera footage, dashboard footage and so on and so forth has been very helpful in, in investigative uh, situations. And what does that mean? Do you, and how, how does it or might it uh, affect a person's uh, Fourth, Fifth and Sixth Amendment rights um, concerning um, release or not release or any of that. So that's what I, that's what I'd like to know.
Yeah, just, just a reminder, body cameras are still relatively new in Urbana. They've been in use about a year and a half. So um, it's, it's a good time to have a discussion. Jared?
Just a quick comment to council member Sharice, uh, you should write down your concerns and email them to the mayor. Mary Alice and I listed some general concerns, but if you have specific ones, you should get those an email to them so we make sure that we get them on and get them answered.
Is this, is this for the special council meeting?
No, this is for, this would be moved to committee of the whole, the next committee.
Yeah, and just a reminder, there uh, next Monday is fifth Monday, no meeting. And there will be no meeting on July 6th. Um, and in, in during that period, um, one of the things we'll be focusing on at the city is transitioning in phase four, which means gradually moving some employees back to the city building, but it'll be a, it'll be a gradual process.
So the next committee of the whole is the 13th?
Uh, I believe so. I don't have a calendar. Yeah, that would be it. And, and we should recognize that this is Eric Jacobson's last. Well, I guess it's next to the last city council meeting as well.
Yes, you're not quite ready.
Okay. So we'll, we'll see you all um, Thursday. And tomorrow night is the special meeting of the CPRB.
Uh, to answer Jared's question, do we need to have a motion to move this off the agenda and to something else? Just a technical question.
Why don't you do it just to make it official? Thank you.
Well, I'll move that we uh, continue this item, hopefully to see it as a presentation, if not a presentation and discussion on the committee of the whole meeting for July the 13th.
I'll second that.
Okay.
And we need to take a.
Yes, roll call vote. Every vote has to be a roll call vote.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown? He's gone, okay. Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. And with no further business before this meeting, uh, we are adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.